Oh, David Field. Yes.
Because statewide is actually original. It's as many forms and graphics as possible. Not such a dense, text laden thing, so.
Oh, okay. We are on. Hello and welcome. This is the regular session of the Town Council, the Town of South Kingstown. The date is March 8th and the time is approximately 7:30. And if I see that we have some Boy Scouts in our room or joining us this evening, if they'd like to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, you could step forward right up in front here. Do you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Dale, may we have the roll call, please?
Council President Fogarty.
Here.
Council Vice President Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman Mcatee.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Councilwoman Whaley.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. Next, we have approval of the minutes of previous meetings from A, the work session of February 22nd. Do I have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is from the regular session of February 22nd. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the regular session minutes of February 22nd.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I hear nothing, then I move approval of this evening's consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to licenses. License A is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the peace in our backyard 5K run and one mile walk on Saturday, March 13th, 2010, at 8:30 a.m. to the Domestic Violence Resource Center of South County, subject to execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance, naming the town as additional insured and the amount specified by the risk manager and the State Traffic Commission approval. The application is by Gary Borden, Director of Public Relations, 61 Main Street Wakefield, and this is a new application. Is anybody here to speak on this? Okay. Please state your name for the record, Mary.
Hello. I'm Mary Rota, the Executive Director of the Domestic Violence Resource Center, South County.
So would you like to tell us a little bit about your race?
Sure. This is a first-time race and it's a collaborative effort between the Courthouse Center for the Arts and the Domestic Violence Resource Center of South County.
Okay. So, March 13th, that's coming up very quickly.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's supposed to rain, but they're wrong.
Ah. You never know until that morning of Mary. Does anybody have any questions for Mary regarding her race?
I wondered where it was going to be, Mary.
Polly, it starts at the Courthouse Center for the Arts. You take a left onto 138, take a left at the stoplight onto Flag Road, goes into URI, and it's a turnaround and back.
Oh, nice.
I have applications with me as well.
Oh, good, okay. Glad to know.
Are there any other questions for Mary? Go ahead, Carol.
Mary, how much does it cost?
The entry fee is $20 online and $25 the day of the race and $5 for a walk because we have a one-mile walk because we've been doing so much education in the schools, we hope. We're hoping that families and children will come do the walk.
That's nice.
Thank you.
Again, any other questions for Mary? Jim?
Yeah, is this, if I have the language correctly, a sanctioned race, so this counts for runners? It's a measured?
We've had it measured and sanctioned, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mary.
Getting ready for the marathon?
Yeah.
Wouldn't you like an application now that you know sanctioned?
Put enough gas in my car.
It's only 5K. Well, do I have a motion to approve Mary's application?
I move approval of license A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck, Mary.
Thank you very much. I do have the certificate of insurance. Who should I give that to?
I'll tell the clerk.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you. All our other licenses were on the consent agenda, so now we move to the public hearing. Public hearing A is an informational, a public informational hearing for the presentation of the final draft report, South Kingstown Village Study, Villages of Wakefield and Peacedale, by the Horstley Witten Group. And I'm going to toss the microphone over to Vin Murray from our planning department. Vin?
Good evening, everybody. Pleased to be here tonight with consultants to make this presentation of the village study. Tonight's presentation marks the conclusion of the village study, a challenge grant project that focused on South Kingstown's core villages of Wakefield and Peacedale. The effort was funded through a $25,000 grant from the Rhode Island Office of Statewide Planning, and we thank them for providing the resources to address a unique and important community planning opportunity for our town. The grant allowed us to engage the Horstley Witten Group as our consulting partner for the project. My staff and I have enjoyed working with Horstley Witten and Field. The study report and its various recommendations will be very useful to the town's planning efforts going forward. The full report is available online via the project website, and I believe the last slide in the presentation will outline the directions to that website. The project was also assisted by a steering committee throughout. Their input was invaluable in shaping the direction of the project and focusing on issues and opportunities critical to efforts at revitalization in both village settings. I'd also like to acknowledge the assistance of the planning board in this study from the start to the finish, you know, starting back when we applied for the grant, as a matter of fact. And the board has embraced the idea of village planning as one of our core policy values for land use in the community. I'd also add thanks to the community at large for attending the three earlier public workshops we held in support of the project. The input at these sessions really helped to guide the study to its conclusion and presentation tonight. In my estimation, in our department's view, the study will contribute significantly to our update process for the comprehensive plan that is now underway. It is planned to incorporate the study by reference in the updated plan, and we further intend to continue to focus on villages through our, a new challenge grant which we recently received for $40,000, which will begin to look at the villages of West Kingston and Mattoonick. And just a couple of last items, our historic villages in the community are really the building blocks of the town. Many people in the town would have a place, identity within the community, you know, Mattoonick, East Mattoonick, Uskupah, Kingston, you know, what have you, Middlebridge. And, you know, it's a pretty unique circumstance that we've maintained that identity over the history of the community. The study we presented tonight focuses on the positive aspects and potentials of Wakefield and Peacedale and the recent good work done by a lot of the grassroots and business groups to revitalize each village with the assistance of the town because the towns had, I think, a pretty good partnership going forward with both village areas, and we've had some good results as a consequence. At this point, I'd like to introduce Nathan Kelly from the Horstley Witten Group. Mr. Kelly is the lead consultant for this project, and he has a PowerPoint presentation that provides an overview of the study and highlights the major recommendations contained therein. I did have copies of the PowerPoint over on the table if people want to follow along. I think there should be a few left over there, I hope, so. In any event, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you very much, Vin, and good evening to you, members of the council. Thanks for having me here tonight and taking some time. I'll just get right into it because I think Vin's introductory comments bring us right to the point here where we can start to summarize some of the objectives and some of the policy issues, some of the development, the physical elements, as well as some of the regulatory elements that we pointed out that we can build upon within these two villages. But just quickly, it is important to acknowledge that this was made possible by a statewide planning challenge grant, and the success of this particular study certainly helped the town obtain an additional grant for an even larger sum of money. So this is something that has been ongoing with the state and the state is very supportive of and will hopefully continue to fund as long as the planning challenge grant is around. The focus area, we started with vision statements, building upon what had already existed through different community discussions. And certainly in Peacedale, a lot of the grassroots organizations there had spent a great deal of time talking about what they thought Peacedale, what was strong about the village, and what they would want it to look like in the future. We built on that format and also developed a vision statement for Wakefield as well. Getting beyond the vision into what's actually on the ground and what's in the regulatory documents, really the study was divided up into two components, an infrastructure and regulatory recommendations. This is a quick list, but we'll go through these one by one here. The pedestrian conditions and recommendations, we did focus on the village core, the districts where, you know, the typical main streets, where the roundabout is, looking at those areas that are really considered to be the heart of the larger Peacedale and Wakefield villages. But we certainly did move beyond that in looking at different elements and how they connect or do not connect potentially to those cores and how we connect the two villages together as well. We saw that as an important piece. So we looked at existing conditions and assessed the strengths and the challenges, and then came up with recommendations relative to the pedestrian environment and the village identity. These two items are really very much intertwined. The identity of these two villages is an identity that is experienced on foot or on a bicycle, really, at its highest level. So we paid close attention to that and tried to bring that out in the recommendations. Within the report, you'll see a figure like this for both, which has a lot more detailed text, but essentially we just tried to locate some of the challenges and some of the strengths, whether it be the amenities like the Sagatucket Park, pedestrian-friendly areas, pedestrian-only areas, or where we see areas where the sidewalk is interrupted. And tried to really point out that even if this is 100 feet, 80 feet, 50 feet of sidewalk, this can serve as a significant visual and psychological barrier to people on foot and, you know, doesn't help to connect people to different businesses, spend their money, enjoy the village, move from one place to another. There are still remnants in the area where things are designed for the automobile first, and that's an area that could use improvement. But we'd like to also point out the way existing businesses interface with the sidewalk, and these elements of lighting, windows, benches, awnings, and signage, sometimes it's not easy for us to understand what makes these areas so pleasant, so inviting to be with. So in this report, we really did try to single out these things one by one to give people a sense of how important these little elements are to the different village environments. And looking over it, you know, with this red line and these green lines here, this is the bike path, here's the pedestrian bridge, the walk along the Sagatucket, these are obviously exclusively pedestrian and bicycle amenities. They sort of represent the highest point in these villages for that level of experience. But getting along Main Street, we also looked at areas where things are in really good shape. This is a very good, you know, sort of planning level assessment and shows how contiguous these lines can be. But it also, here in the blue, shows some of these critical breaks. So when the town is moving forward, thinking about public improvements, thinking about what they want to do with their regulations, these are the case studies that we're looking at. These are the areas where we really want to connect this straight through in a way that you don't even feel as you're walking down the sidewalk, this is what we need to focus on. So just a closer look, here are the, you know, pedestrian-only amenities. Here's one of these breaks in the sidewalks. You know, this is a, this is a great example of adaptive reuse. This is essential services with a dry cleaner, something that everybody's going to use. The building looks great, things have been put together here, but what we've been left with vestiges from the old here is this kind of break with two major curb cuts, obstacles still left within the right-of-way. So these little, again, these little details, attention to detail, these are things that we can focus on, you know, to try to bring this into, you know, less of an auto-oriented thing and make it something that's less threatening to walk across this to get from one end of the village to the other. And of course, these wide areas of unbroken pavement also add to that feeling that, well, if I'm walking here, how safe is it for me to get from the doorway over to the sidewalk? And looking at Peacedale, something very similar, we looked at these details, you see a blank space like this along the right-of-way. You know, a lot of people might say this detracts from the experience. There's not much here, there's nothing to look at in the window, but there are also opportunities here. The communities that deal with this effectively are the ones who deal with it creatively. Peacedale has an artistic identity. Why not look at something like this as an opportunity for public art, a mural or something like that, and not really have to go through the huge headache of redevelopment, changing buildings, changing tenancies? You could do something, you know, pretty quickly to make that a part of the streetscape. Private amenities versus these public, these other opportunities, you know, here's an example of where you have things on the street, sitting areas, so really a great combination of different elements that whether you're walking by, want to go in and out to get your coffee here, or sit and enjoy yourself, there's a lot to offer in this tiny little corner. Again, the public art element, a big part of Peacedale, and continuing to look at how to integrate that, enhance that. Here are elements, again, the lightings, the windows, the benches, awnings, and signage, all in one quick little snapshot along the area. This is what needs to be enhanced and encouraged as we continue to go through the development and redevelopment process. There are areas of new activity. One of the interesting things about looking at Peacedale in particular are all the properties that are in flux right now, which makes this particular study very important right now in terms of, you know, getting people focused on these areas where we will have new opportunities with private monies moving forward. And then finally here, just another shot at that sidewalk interrupted, where we're trying to get from one place to the other, and just because of some auto-oriented design, we do get a fairly significant interruption here. So we looked at the bike path running through the village, and here are some of the areas that are in really good shape from a pedestrian perspective. And then here are some areas that fragment the streetscape. So potentially, again, a way to prioritize looking ahead into the future and seeing what kind of improvements we can make in the public realm. So here's some of the nicer shots of the way existing businesses are integrating landscape into the sidewalk experience. And here are some shots where the streetscape is certainly interrupted, but this is a development opportunity. This is something that will come forward in the future. Something's going to get built here. How that's going to happen is going to really affect the way this gets tied back into the streetscape. So we looked at the landscaping, street trees, sidewalks, planting, street furniture, the benches, cafe seating, lighting, pedestrian safety. These are all sort of dealt with singularly in the report, looking at where it's strong, which is in a lot of places, and looking where it's not so strong and trying to address how that moves forward. With the landscaping, some of it's installed permanently and some of it's installed temporarily. Some of it's private and some of it's public, and that's what we need to be mindful of as we're talking about public investment versus standards for private investment moving forward along those areas. Nice models in terms of Peacedale here. There's been discussion, and it's addressed in the report, about dealing with parking areas in Wakefield. There's a few opportunities there to redevelop parking areas to make them more accessible, more attractive, and you've got a great model in Peacedale, some of the elements here that could be incorporated into that. The lighting, the way we deal with this in the report is we talk about different types of lighting that exist there today, and this is one of those interesting elements where we paid a lot of attention to what was the same about Peacedale and Wakefield, and we also tried to call attention to what was different and what is different today and what could be different in the future. And these are just really interesting opportunities about how you can change the scale of lighting to reflect sort of a different scale of village. Wakefield's a little bit more built up, a little bit more imposing. Peacedale is a little bit more communal, a little bit more human scale, and that should be reflected in your different street features moving forward. Pedestrian safety, again, good models here in terms of a really wide curb cut that you have to get across, so how do you deal with that effectively? You do that with a pedestrian island down in Wakefield. Other, moving outside the core, other things that were looked at were the gateways. We talked about what it's like to drive off the highway on Route 1 and come down through the Dale Carlia area, looking for Wakefield. Can we even find it? And are we exactly sure where we're going? And what does that say to the outsider, to the tourist, who's going to come to historic Wakefield? And how is that designed and what kind of features can we add to that moving forward? We talked about the bike path, the opportunities that that creates for local businesses, and trying to make sure that there's nothing in the existing regulations today that would hinder access off the bike path to villages. One of the things that came out of this study is that the areas that a lot of business owners and a lot of pedestrians and a lot of residents don't tend to think about the back of the shop, maybe there's a parking area, maybe there's just a dumpster. Well, with the way things have been going, with the walkway down in the Sagatucket River, with the bike path coming through Peacedale, these areas that were once hidden from view are now primary spaces in these villages. So more attention has to be paid to those, and perhaps more incentive can be given to the local property owners to really dress those up, connect them to the bike path, and make it more of a part of the everyday experience there. So the key crossings and the connections, the signage, whether it be for the bike path, whether it be for parking areas, and again, just the little details, you know, the Art Park that we talked about, maybe, you know, coming out of all the efforts that have already started in Peacedale, all the public art fixtures that are already there, and just continue to build on that. There's just a tremendous foundation. So here are these gateway places that we talked about, and here's, you know, what was once a forgotten space and now is right here on the bike path. So not only does it make sense to make this more attractive, but it makes more business sense here to tell these people what's inside, have some signage back here. How do we deal with secondary signs in our local regulations? Give these folks an opportunity to pull some customers off the bike path. So here's an interesting example of how this is happening today, right here at the junction, a nice little, you know, one of these cluster signs, one of these tenant signs here that can give folks a real quick, highly visible rundown of what they have an opportunity for once they come down through the bike path. Parking conditions, parking is one of the most important elements of village planning. Again and again, in New England, we find that we're trying to maintain these historic villages that once may never have had any parking. They started with hitching posts. And how do we deal with that now when we're dealing with, you know, a society that's very dependent on the automobile while trying to maintain that character? There are a lot of good parking opportunities, that's the good news, for both of these villages, dealing with the on-street parking, and we talked about parking design. The standards that you have in place already are very good, conducive to village-scale developments, you know, not encouraging a sprawl type, not consuming a lot of land in these village areas. So we looked at the Peacedale Lot again as a model for potentially the Intermodal Lot, the Sagatucket River Lot, that idea once again that this was a forgotten space and is now front and center with that pedestrian walk-through along the river. And then just some general tenants of parking design in terms of incorporating some good stormwater management practices, landscaping practices, and those types of things. So some examples here, ample on-street parking in both of the villages. Here's the Sagatucket River Lot, which again has made this what was once, we called a secondary space into a primary space. And the use of rear spaces, this is common practice. We certainly don't put slides in this to point the finger at anybody. This is how we have to manage our waste. But there are ways to screen this, ways to design this in a manner that makes it a little bit more compatible with people who are, you know, entering the villages through these spaces now. And here's the Intermodal Parking Lot, which is a tremendous resource for folks coming into Wakefield, but obviously, you know, without stripes, without stormwater management, and in some areas without pavement, we need to think about, you know, defining this space, designing this a little bit better to make it that much more of a well-functioning resource. So here's the Peacedale Lot again as a, as a model for some of the elements there. In Peacedale, we also take a lesson here from the way these buildings are oriented to the parking lot. These entrances, of course, are not on the street, but they are the primary entrances for these businesses. So it's a good lesson, again, how, you know, what may not have been an important side of this building when it was constructed really is now, and with the awning, the nice paint, the potted plants in the front, the brick face, this all becomes, you know, much more inviting to people walking in the area. Looking at infrastructure, another thing that we thought about seriously were the stormwater conditions and the recommendations. The most obvious example of what's a problem, a challenge today, is the flooding in the flats up in Peacedale. You get a significant rainstorm and cars are swimming through that area, and it's a major problem. So we thought about the water quantity issue, but we also thought about water quality. When we look at this area here on this aerial photograph, here's the Wakefield Study Area here outlined in blue, and the Peacedale Study Area here outlined in blue. And these yellow lines represent storm drainage systems. So when you take a step back from this really complicated mess here, what you see is that stormwater is coming from far and wide around Peacedale to this point right here. So if you want to know why the flats are flooding like they are, this is it here. Infrastructure was built to match the existing grades. This is how things drained naturally, so this is how they're draining now through the pipes, and they're carrying an enormous amount of water into this spot. It is then moving downstream towards Wakefield. Wakefield has its own little bowl effect going, stormwater moving up and down the street here into that area, and then moving south out into the salt ponds. This is a lot of pollution to be moving into a sensitive, downgradient resource here. So, you know, moving forward, Rhode Island DEM is modifying their stormwater standards now as we speak. Those are out for public comment, so there are going to be some new requirements to deal with. There is grant money, significant grant money through EPA's Section 319 program that can be used to retrofit these areas for some cleanup, so that, what we talked about in the report was really how to assess this area. What is the work that's required to do this effectively? So here's that sort of contributing area to these tiny little spots there, roughly laid out so you can see how much water is really pouring into here during any given rainstorm. So the assessment that we discussed was delineating the drainage network, which, you know, really, to a great extent, has been done. You have very good GIS resources in the town and very good mapping. That needs to be updated, as always, as, you know, as part of regular maintenance. There needs to be a little bit of field investigation to make sure that we've got it right in terms of where that watershed boundary starts. We need to observe what's happening. Water is moving through pipes, water is moving through streams, water is moving over the road as just an example of the different ways it's being conveyed towards the flats. Which one is the problem? I don't think anybody really knows. Which streams are overflowing first? Which pipes are overflowing first? Is it the sheet flow coming down the streets down into the roundabout area? This is something that somebody has to stand out in the rain and look at and figure out in order to get this right. Identifying areas of opportunity, do we come up in the watershed to try and short-circuit some of the flow, or do we go down into the watershed and go to the end of the pipe and try to manage things this way? Do we do it through the private sector, the public infrastructure, a combination of both? What's the most effective way to deal with this? So some calculations, and of course, some funding needs to be procured, and you are on your way. So, you know, I like this picture because here we are right in the flats. You see all this pavement here, and this one little lonely storm drain here. You're asking a lot of this tiny little guy during a major rainstorm. So that's part of the problem that you're dealing with, the big ones. On the little ones, this is probably more than adequate. But once you get millions of gallons of water gushing into this area, this poor little guy doesn't have a prayer. The state's transportation improvement program, the town has been requesting improvements in these areas for quite some time. I think Vin had found some records back in the 1950s, letters being sent up to the state, you know, requesting some improvements to drainage infrastructure. That needs to continue, High Street being a perfect example. And, you know, again, we were looking at the connection between the villages. High Street is such an important piece of moving people, especially in automobiles, between the two villages. between the two villages. From a regulatory perspective, we sort of looked at what we called minor recommendations and some major recommendations. For the minor recommendations, one of the things you have to be careful of when you're looking at village planning is transitioning from sort of your mixed-use, commercial, industrial setting into the surrounding neighborhoods, because this is all very well-established. There's very little vacant land. We want to use the villages as an economic center. We want them to be a viable part of the local tax base, but we don't want to upset anybody and create nuisances while this is all happening. So we took a look at the, what we call the transition areas, moving from one district to another. What do the buffer standards look like, the setbacks and the screening, and made some recommendations for how that could be made a little bit more effective. The industrial one, this is these are mill properties. So what we looked at here were just some minor adjustments to making sure that no opportunities are lost. One of the more potent trends now in mill use, mill redevelopment, are transitory uses. People who, farmers' markets that come in in the winter, for example, and occupy the space on a Saturday morning. Assemblies, performances, group gatherings in town. So these types of sort of transient uses are something that should be really spelled out clearly in the ordinance, just to make sure there's no confusion. And we provided some language for that, for you to consider. It's important to recognize, when we talk about zoning and regulation, that in many cases in the village study, we provided language, actual zoning language, but that language is only a starting point. When considering, you know, endorsement of this plan, what everybody needs to be mindful of is, we provided what we felt is a detailed foundation when we're talking about design, when we're talking about zoning language. So there's still work to be done, but we really did provide some good detail for you to consider. And the final bullet here is looking at housing on the ground-floor uses for certain areas of the CD District. So today, that is not allowed in the CD District, and we were thinking of, there's a concept in planning called the transect, where you look at that immediate street front, and that's your most intensive use, really the way Wakefield is laid out today and parts of Peastale, where the most intensive use is right up there on the street front, and as you scale back towards the residential areas, it tapers off a bit. And one of the ways to do that is to allow residential use on the ground floor as you move away. So we talked about that and provided some numbers for people to consider moving on into those discussions. Major recommendations, we talked about cottage zoning, and I'll get into what that's all about, design guidelines for the Dale Carlia area, and design guidelines for the interior of Wakefield and Peastale, and I'll talk a little bit why we thought those should be treated differently. To begin with cottage-style zoning, this is a style of development that started as what people thought would be exclusively for retirement communities. As the name suggests, it's really small houses, all clustered together. It requires a flexible site design approach, so it would be similar to the FDRP that you have today on the books, but it is a stronger focus on the housing style. I'll show you some pictures. And then the idea of a common space, a courtyard or a shared area. What is very beneficial, many benefits to cottage-style housing, these smaller homes are going to add to the diversity of housing stock within the community, and it really does provide a vehicle for affordability that's unique, and really could be used as an infill strategy within the two villages, provides something very attractive but also very affordable. So this is sort of what this might look like. These are a couple of cottage communities. What was interesting is, again, I said this was designed originally as a retirement model, and then retirees and everybody else started moving in here. So it really was a lot more popular than originally anticipated by kind of the architects and the planners who started implementing this. Starter families, folks who, you know, just really want a smaller home, again, folks who are looking for something a little bit more affordable, closer to village areas. There was, you know, they started seeing a much more diverse demographic in these communities than originally anticipated. The design guidelines, we looked at the specific goals for each district in thinking about this, thought about the enforcement mechanism and the degree of flexibility that you want to associate. So we really used the village report here to start this discussion. Discussing design is a very important discussion for any community, partly because there's so many different ways to do it. And you've got to find the right framework that fits South Kingston, that fits these two villages, and we elaborated on that in the report and talked about why different areas might need a different treatment. But, you know, this is sort of where this discussion is heading, at the end of the day. This is a sample of design guidelines from another community, but just to give you a sense of what it looks like when you've gotten through the discussion, these are the sort of, you know, annotated call-out illustrations that you're thinking of. We talked about Dale Carlia. We talked about how that's different from the two village cores, why, in our opinion, you'd want to have more flexibility in the village cores than you would in an area like Dale Carlia, because of the types of businesses you're attracting, because you're going to be dealing with potentially more raise-and-replace-type investment out in the gateway area. When you're trying to integrate new business or redevelopment into something that's so well-established as Peastale and Wakefield, you want to give an architect a little bit more flexibility to look at the building next door, to look at the way that building's perceived from the street, and have an intelligent discussion during the regulatory process of how these different elements are going to be incorporated into the site and building design. So that's a brief overview. Here's the website that Vin was discussing. So you can go to this website, take a look at the study. This website will also connect you to the comprehensive plan website that's been set up. So there's an ongoing survey process right now. If you haven't taken the survey, you've got to do that. We'll have that up for a few more days, probably. And, you know, again, we think that, you know, based on the discussions we've had with the planning board, the folks out on the streets, we think that there, we feel very strongly that this kind of approach to the villages is really going to be the pillar to the bigger planning questions in town, because these really are the heart, whether you're looking at social issues, economic, environmental issues, this is really where most of the action is, is in these villages.
Well, thank you for a very good presentation. I thought that was very thorough. And I neglected to mention that the Planning Board is here with us this evening, who worked with the Hosley-Witten Group and along with Vin.
We also have some members of our steering committee here as well.
Okay.
Appreciate them taking the time to attend tonight. This project I found to be particularly interesting because it's focused on the history of the villages, and there's a nice little concise discussion of the two village histories in there. And it also took a little different tact in terms of the infrastructure things, by looking at pedestrian issues first and automobile issues later, as opposed, you know, which is kind of the reverse of what's often done. And the whole scale of the village is the pedestrian, and I really enjoyed that focus, and I think that's something we can apply to other settings in the town as well. Another outcome of this is that, you know, this was funded through state dollars, and the statewide planning program plays a relatively significant organizational role in the crafting of the State's Transportation Improvement Program, which we have been trying for many years to get High Street on and the drainage issues that are, I guess, kind of plaguing the area and holding back meaningful redevelopment. So we're hopeful that this project, this study, will give us a little more gravity towards that issue and getting the issue. It's been our study and development for years, and it hasn't really moved in any meaningful direction. Several months ago, the town manager and I met with Mike Lewis from DOT, and Steve took him out for a ride, and I think he made sure he hit every pothole on High Street. And I think, you know, those kinds of conversations, I think, may help bear fruit. It's a complicated and expensive proposition to address, but it really has to be addressed because infrastructure can hinder or encourage revitalization of community values, and unless we've got to get the state on board, because, you know, Main Street's a state road, High Street's a state road, Kingston Road to Peastale. And a couple of things have happened positively during the course of the, the new crosswalks we put in seventeen in the two villages, which are a definite improvement, and good signage to go along with them to alert the motorists, you know, with the high-visibility yellow signage. But I think, you know, we're, you know, department-wise, pleased with the study. There's a great deal of detail in it. It provides some reasonable and concrete recommendations for things we can do that would be low-cost and no-cost. It recognizes the role that the grassroots agents, you know, groups like Peastale NRI and the Friends of Wakefield and the Wakefield merchants have done in promoting their areas. It discusses the importance of events that both villages have been very good at putting together, and I think it recognizes that the town can support these efforts, but, you know, a lot of times, the best things happen is when the community takes the lead outside, you know, the towns, you know, with the town's support, but we ought to know when to get out of the way of a good idea as well. Another aspect I think that's very important in the study is the recognition of the importance of the bike path and how that connects the two villages and how it can serve as a means for revitalization. A particular interest is how some businesses have begun to see the bike path as a resource. You know, two examples, you have Devozy Bakery in Peastale. And Wakefield, I guess it's in the old sawmill property, the Smoothie Booty. They have little benches and signs, and I guess, you know, because the bike path gets a lot of walkability in all seasons, and it's a tremendous resource, and I think once it's completed through the narrative, it'll be even enhanced as well. And lastly, on the subject of the bike path, with Phase Three of the bike path construction, we will see the paving and striping of the Intermodal Lot. We have a design in place, a copy of which is in the report as an appendix at the end, and I think that lot gets a good deal of use at present, and I think it'll really improve it, you know, when it's properly paved. And so, I mean, you know, the positivity of this review was something that I enjoy very much from a professional perspective, and I think recognizing some of the good things, because oftentimes we dwell on the negative in these trying economic times, or, you know, planning a lot of times involves saying no and stuff like that. But, you know, this report actually says a lot of yeses about the good things happening and the momentum that's there and how it can be built upon. So it's, you know, it presents a nice positive image of the future of these areas, and that's great for the town.
Are there any questions for Vin or Mr. Kelly or any of our members of the Planning Board, the Council? No? Does the Planning Board like to say anything while they're here? They don't have to, you don't, Maria, if you want to.
This was a really rewarding and gratifying project to work on. We hope that the suggestions and recommendations will lead to businesses making an investment in our community, as well as help procure future funding, particularly from the state.
I agree with you on that one, Maria. Say that louder so they can hear you upstate. Okay, if there's no questions from the Council, then this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public. If anybody has any questions about the presentation, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Leslie Schwannad, Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization. No questions, but this is a great group to work with, and I think my comments probably will be for the next public hearing on economic development. A couple of things that we're looking at and trying to do, okay?
Oh, okay, that's fine, all right. Anyone else? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, David Caprio. I hadn't come planning to speak on this tonight, but since you were talking about state aid, I figured it was a good time to get up. I just want to introduce myself and make myself available to you. I'm the state representative from this area. With regard to state assistance and also working with you with DOT for the state roads that you just mentioned a little while ago, I'm very accessible and look forward to working with you on that. Unfortunately, I'm no longer on the Finance Committee, so the state aid, I'm not on the front lines of that anymore, as far as being part of the process, you know, in the room, but certainly still, we'll work hard to secure whatever we can.
Okay. Thank you, David. Is there anybody else? Okay. Please come forward and state your name.
Jonathan Daly-Labelle. I don't know if this was in the scope of the project, but, you know, was there an evaluation of, you know, potential uses for properties? And I guess, you know, the one I really think of is Palisades. You know, does that end up getting weighed in? You know, what you would see the best uses for that, because that's kind, you know, that's Peastale, I guess.
Well, not so much specifically, but what the report does do a little bit of is talk about some of the need to maybe consider some amendments to our zoning that would be more encouraging of emerging uses that a lot of mill properties are going towards, many of which are kind of a creative uses that relate to the arts, communities, or just, I think, some of the specific recommendations talked about some of the industrial use codes that we have in place that kind of date back to an earlier time in industrial processing, and it's a little bit on the prohibitive side. I would make note that the Economic Development Committee has outlined some recommendations for amendments that would kind of speak to that, that the Planning Board has under review, but although it wasn't a specific focus, the mills are certainly key to the revitalization efforts in both villages. And Wakefield has done quite well, the Wakefield Mill, but in Peastale, the Palisades and the Rocky Brook Mill have, you know, fairly good-sized vacancies associated with them.
Right, I mean, yeah, I guess I'll state the obvious, but I mean, whatever happens, you know, specifically with Palisades and, you know, the other mill that you mentioned, I mean, that's going to really determine, I mean, I appreciate the report, and it was very detailed, and, but, you know, that, you know, that will impact, obviously, the area pretty greatly. So whatever insights you can add, you know, I mean, not necessarily tonight, but just through this process is much appreciated. And then I just had an unrelated question. You know, the Intermodal on the river there by the bike path, was that project shovel-ready? Is there still opportunities to get, you know, stimulus dollars to get that moving along?
As I recall, I think the design is seventy-five percent or so. Andy or Steve?
Probably close to the fifty percent. But that project was submitted to the state on the inventory of projects for South Kingston for the construction of that building. The design's been completed, the basic work is done. It wouldn't take us long to get that up and ready to go online. But the parking lot is going to be done, as Vin said earlier, hopefully, once Phase Three starts. We're assuming Phase Three for the bike path will go either this summer or the latest would be the fall, and that is a component of that project.
Are there, I'm not sure that the phases of the stimulus dollars, are there still stimulus dollars out there that it may, you know, may happen, or is that just based upon if there's, if more stimulus dollars become available?
A great deal of the stimulus dollars haven't been assigned specific projects as of yet by the state. There's a number of different state agencies that are dealing with different pieces of the arimony. Projects that were going to be brick and mortar that are outside of the purview of DOT projects, we haven't seen any recommendations at this point from the state on how that money would be distributed. But when we provided the projects listing last year, the Intermodal facility was one of the projects the town brought forward for South Kingston, consideration for use of those funds.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a nice coup if that could come into play.
Definitely. We did, as the manager mentioned, we submitted quite a number of them. That was all done back actually in January all night. And they have a specific decision to make, so to speak, and the manager also wanted to get a lot of those funding. manager also wanted to get a lot of those funding decisions that have been made yet. But, uh, well, overall, some of the, certainly, it took them to, uh, well, we obviously paid the construction of the comfort station, you know, like, so, uh, second base, so to speak, to be at that. And that would really be, uh, next year, so, uh, the Main Street.
Right, thank you.
Hi, um, my name's Justin Galant. I own, uh, business downtown Pier Pizza and then also I'm a town resident. Um, I guess first I, I just want to voice my appreciation as a Main Street business owner that the town is looking ahead, uh, that you guys did do this study. Um, I also want to, you know, I appreciate one of our representatives being here, Representative Caprio, I, I appreciate that. Um, it's a bit of a shame that the rest of our representatives weren't here. Um, a lot of our town planning and, and all that's here, so I appreciate that. So I just wanted to, uh, say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galant. Is there no more questions? I'll move to motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
If they're moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And now, do we have a motion to accept the presentation?
Hey, you actually have a motion?
March third memo.
I'll just read it. I'd like to make a motion for the South Kingstown Town Council hereby accepts the report entitled "South Kingstown Village Study: Villages of Wakefield and Peacedale Final Report, February sixteenth, two thousand and ten, submitted by Horsley Witten Group. The council further directs the planning board to review the various recommendations and we ask that you do that contained in the report and develop an implementation schedule for said action as appropriate." I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Thank you for our planning board for being here this evening. Just give a minute for everybody to clear. They're more than welcome to stay if you, if you'd like. Okay, next we're going to move on to the, um, public hearing B. Um, a public hearing relative to a proposed amendment to the town code, chapter two, administration, article three, boards and commissions, section two, uh, forty, economic development committee as follows, chapter two, administration, article three, boards and commissions, the town, the town, section two forty, economic development committee, the town council recognizes the need to expand the community's tax base and to encourage the development of, retention of skilled employment opportunities for local residents to promote a stable and diversified local economy. The town council may appoint an economic development committee consisting of eleven members, serving three terms, to serve an advisory capacity to the planning board and the town council. So, I think I'll just speak to that. Um, this is just a, a thing that the council had brought forward unless, Steve, did you want to talk about this?
There's been a number of applications for, uh, additional membership on the Economic Development Committee and, uh, approximately a month ago, the council asked whether there was a, uh, specific prohibition about increasing. We indicated at that time that since the, uh, scope of the Economic Development Committee was, uh, embedded in the town code, it would require an amendment. The amendment that's before the council tonight would provide the opportunity for more, uh, local business people to become involved in the Economic Development Committee. Obviously, any efforts that the Economic Development Can, uh, Committee can make, uh, and the more people that can be working on that common goal of providing greater job opportunity or, and a stable job market in South Kingstown, uh, is in the community's best interest. So the council requested that we place this, uh, item on the agenda for consideration tonight. That's the, uh, basis for it being presented.
Okay. Would anybody like to speak to that on the council?
I think.
Go ahead, Jim.
I think we're all in agreement that, um, uh, it's exciting to have a number of applications for a particular committee jump like this and, uh, hate to miss the opportunity to expand this committee and especially with, uh, uh, what we need for improving tax base and what we heard tonight, uh, what the Planning and Economic Development Committee could do together and hopefully exciting things will happen with Palisades supposedly near a sale and, uh, Larchwood's coming at us and, uh, downtown and all the needs we have there, I, I think it's the right thing to do at this time.
Carol?
I'd just like to say we've had many, uh, very qualified applicants apply for, uh, we have even one, just one opening, I think, up until now? And we've received, uh, quite, very talented people who could probably add a lot to this committee and help the town.
Yeah, alright. Um, if there's nothing else from the council, we'll see if anybody from the public has anything to say regarding, oh, please state your name for the record.
Leslie Schwannad, representing Peacedale Neighborhood Revitalization. Um, just to give you an idea of, of what we're doing, uh, for economic development, you know that last Tuesday, I know a lot of you couldn't make it, you received the invitation, but you had budget hearings, um, and Vin was there, it was a very good meeting, we had a lot of leaders from the community there. Uh, as you know, and I don't think a lot of you have seen it, but I think, um, uh, Vin's going to arrange for maybe some of you to see our movie, it's five and a half minutes. Uh, this movie has already been on, and I'm so, you know, computer literate, I understand it's on YouTube and, um, I just talked with Joe Iacco of the, um, of.
Chamber.
Chamber. I brought him, he wanted it, so it's going on his website. Um, the two libraries, Peacedale has a copy, the town has a copy, the guild has a copy. And I will be sending this out to some various news stations, Yankee Magazine, um, wherever we can send it out, we're sending it out, we have a hundred copies. It's five and a half minutes, it's a good film, I hope a lot of you get to see it, Vin does have a copy of it. And we are definitely, um, going toward economic development. That's what we want, that's what we want for Peacedale, that's what we want for the town. It's a very well-done movie, I think Vin can attest to that, I think Andy has seen the movie also. Can you attest to it? So, um, anyway, uh, so if you get a chance and, and we do have copies and if somebody wants a copy, I'd be glad to let them have it. All right, thank you.
You don't know the title on the YouTube, just go to like Peacedale, you think, Revitalization or Peacedale Economic Development, what, what?
I guess so, Kathy. All I know is it's on YouTube. I know nothing about computers, I admit it, it's, it's, uh, I guess it's.
You don't have to admit it, it's okay, it's alright.
Somebody told me it's on YouTube and that's all I know. And we got ninety-three hits, that's all I know.
That's good. Polly has a question for you.
I wondered, Leslie, who did the film for you?
Oh, Dana Nugent did the film for us. He is with URI in the Film Department, he's also a professional filmmaker and he, um, he won the Metcalf Award for documentaries. He did a big one on the fishing, uh, thing in Galilee and he usually gets ten to twenty thousand dollars for doing these. Needless to say, we didn't pay that for him to do it, so, uh, but he, he is a professional filmmaker and he worked with us a year to do this and he did a nice job on it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Hearing none? Um, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close a public hearing.
Second.
They're moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a motion to accept the public hearing or approve the public hearing?
Yeah, approve public hearing, item B, we'll do it.
Okay.
I move, uh, approval of public hearing, item B. Second.
They're moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Okay, next we move on to communications. We go to communication, item D, a resolution adopted February tenth, two thousand and ten by the Bristol Town Council in support of House Bill two thousand and ten, H seventy fourteen, an act relating to waters and navigation, regulation of boats relative to bridge safety recorded, it was, excuse me, is received and placed on file and the town council further directs.
I think the decision was to place it on file. So I move, we place it on file.
Second. They're moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Well, it sounds like it's going to pass quite easily, but we did spend about fifteen minutes on this, on the work section, trying to figure out the engineering and height of bridges, uh, economic development, the state, and this is a tough one. But, um, I guess we'll, at the moment, uh, I agree Polly will put it on file, but something that I think's going to come at us later date, maybe a referendum, but who knows? We'll see.
We'll see. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? No, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a communication received March third, two thousand and ten from Robert Allen Silverstein, StopDatingViolence.org, thanking the council for its proclamation recognizing February as Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month and requesting a pro, proclamation recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month is received, placed on file and the town council further directs. The council, what would they like to do?
We certainly can't agree enough. I mean, that's, this is, I don't know what else we can do except support this, but, um, certainly we have to preach it and practice it and hopefully the communities will pay attention to this.
Okay, so Jim is supporting this?
Full support.
Full support, absolutely.
So that was second from Ella, I'll take that. They're moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to comments from interested citizens. If anybody has any comments, if they could please come forward and state their name for the record.
Jonathan Daley LaBelle. Um, you know, first of all, I guess, uh, I want to give you guys kudos. I know you guys have had a ton of budget meetings, uh, last week and you got meetings all this week. And, uh, you know, I went to the, the two forums over the last couple of weeks and then there was a separate school committee meeting, you know, there's a lot of, um, discussion going on about how our schools are going to look. And, uh, it's a lot of, it's a lot of time invested, you know? So, um, you know, I'm proud of what I'm doing, um, but, you know, I also give you guys credit for, you know, you guys put in a lot of time. Um, I guess, and then I, so with these other meetings, I didn't make any of the meetings, like, any of your meetings last week, so I apologize. Um, so, so this may have come up, um, but, uh, I, I have, I proposed this last year and, and it seemed like it was, it kind of added in, you know, to, um, this idea of, you know, with some of the budget choices that the communities face, that you're faced, uh, on our behalf, um, you know, what is the actual cost per person? So I know you guys have the, you know, there's a big meeting on Wednesday. Um, I'm hoping that that can be looked at as, you know, some of the numbers of, you know, what, if there are cuts proposed or looking to put money back in, you know, what the tax ramifications, uh, will be for the average citizen. So I, I guess I'm just kind of throwing that out there, that hopefully that can be incorporated in. I don't know if that made any sense or not, but hopefully somebody understood me. Um, I guess I, I wanted to, uh, just ask, you know, town council about, um, you know, the acquisition of a piece of land on Broad Rock. Um, you know, I'm not, I haven't done a lot of research as far as value, um, I'm sure it was a good value. Um, but I guess I'm just, you know, and I know that we didn't have to pick up the whole tab, you know, as far as local town tax dollars, um, but it was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and, you know, just going to these budget meetings, you know, I hear the, uh, the doom and gloom and it's, a lot of it's very real. I mean, don't, don't get me wrong. Um, but I'm just wondering if that was the, the right acquisition to make. Um, again, I don't know the value, but, you know, sometimes you can have a good deal, um, but if it's a piece that's not necessarily, you can spend money on something you don't necessarily need. Um, so I guess that would be.
Mr. Alfred, did you want to respond to that?
Well, I mean, I really would like to know what the town council's opinion is on that.
I think it was an excellent deal.
Okay. I mean, I, I guess where I'm coming from is, you know, we have a vacant school right now in town, that's.
Okay. Did you want us to answer you now or?
Oh, sure.
Can I interrupt?
Well, I can, I can, I can just add one little piece to give you my, a little more context. Um, there is a vacant piece of land with a school that's vacant on it, um, as I'm sure you're aware, that's now being talked about, that another school may close. So I guess I'm just wanting, I don't know if there's reasons behind it, why it couldn't be and, I mean, that's why I'm really asking as a question, but where I look at that South Road School, that seems like that would be a great place for a community gym. You know, if the school's not going to be used as a school and we have that piece in our control, is this the, now the time to, you know, pick up another piece when, when budgets are so tight?
Oh, Polly?
Jonathan, to answer your question about the land, you know where it's located and you as a realtor know land comes up just once in a blue moon, sometimes it's not for sale and you wish you had it. And that is located, as you know, between Broad Rock School and our senior center. It's to us, to the town, it's a very valuable piece of land. And, uh, the town council, actually, I believe you said seven fifty, it, it was seven hundred thousand we paid for that.
Three fifty and seven hundred.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and, uh, we actually voted that they could, the, it was a unanimous vote by the council that the council could go higher than that if need be, because we all thought it was, we've been watching for that for years and we all thought that was a very valuable piece of land. Yes, it would have been lovely if the church had decided to give it to us, but the church needs the money too, so we had no qualms about it. That's the way I felt.
Any of the council want to say anything?
If I could, I, I just want to correct one thing in your statement. There are no property tax dollars going into the acquisition of the Dominic Savio property. The price tag was seven hundred thousand dollars. Of that, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars came through grants. The other three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is coming through funds that are held in reserve for land development, uh, which is what people were paying for subdivisions and from the recreation impact fee funds. So there was no property tax dollars, there are no dollars that were lost on that acquisition that could be used for any municipal purpose other than for land acquisition that would be used for future development, uh, on municipal projects. The town has not committed to building a gym on that property. We have looked at that property and said it's a prime candidate for being able to construct a gym. The other thing we were able to negotiate was to have the diocese commit to constructing a lacrosse soccer field on that property at no cost to the town, with them having a dedicated use for their school teams and for all other hours that would be part of the municipal, uh, park system. So there are no tax dollars that were lost that could have gone to other purposes and I want to make that clear. I've said it several times, uh, in the past, but apparently it's not public information, uh, at this time.
Okay.
So that's, again, just one second, that's why the town council unanimously supported purchasing that property. So there were no tax dollars used, so not to be confused on that. And also you mentioned that you missed the meetings and I just want to remind you that we stream all the meetings now, so you can go right back onto the South Kingstown Town website and watch, um, all the budget hearings.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
I just want to say, uh, one thing about this Dominic Savio property. Uh, Polly mentioned the location, it's very centrally located, but we also have to think in a futuristic manner sometimes as we sit up here, you know, as everyone said, it's a once, it comes, it, it comes to us now, if we, if the town didn't take it, a developer probably would have and it would have kept us from the access in the future. I mean, it's also, it has a walkway to the commons, I mean, there's a lot of uses over there. Besides being between the senior center, the Broad Rock Fields, the Broad Rock School, I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's a one-of-a-kind property that may, you know, seemed like it would be a mistake if we didn't go for it now.
Okay, I mean, it sounded to me like it was really tied in with a community gym and I may, I may have misunderstood that. Um, and, and, you know.
I think it is tied in with a gym from a planning purpose, but again, remember the gym was approved, authorization for that four million dollar project goes back, I think, three years at this point. We have extended out because of the financial situation that the state, the local government and the, and the national government is, uh, is faced with, we've pushed those dates off. When and if that gym is constructed, will be a policy decision of the council and the public as far as the input that they provide. But for long-term planning, hopefully this, uh, economic downturn will come to an end and we will need to be able to, uh, to continue to provide proper facilities for what the public needs in, in terms of public services. And, uh, you know, if that property were not acquired, one of the proposals that had come forward on that. forward on that property was the construction of multiple housing units, elderly housing units, that would have had profound impact on the senior center. Could have been used for subdivision purposes, it could have been used for any number of residential development purposes that would have been in the middle of all of those municipal activities that are occurring there. And when we look to do planning for the future in land acquisition, what we want to do is to make sure that we acquire land adjacent to existing land, so that mobilization costs to be able to service those properties in the future. Once we go to one site, we're not traveling three miles or five miles to the next site. It provides for efficiency. So I haven't seen many deals that this town has put together that I think was more appropriate and necessary for the community than that acquisition at this time. And I believe 10 years from now, people will be very satisfied with the fact that the town acquired that property, rather than to allow it to go into any other type of non-public ownership.
Okay. I mean, I think my concern is when I think of the community gym, and I'm not sure the ramifications of pushing that out, maybe there aren't any, because I know that was approved, and, you know, but in any case, you know, when that gets built, or, you know, if it gets built, it seems like it would be tied into the bike path, that would be ideal. And the bike path does connect right as we were, we've been talked about, ties right into Wakefield Village and Peacedale Village. And I hear a lot of talk about concern for the villages. I know that I have concern for the villages, and they need all the help they can get. So I think if the construction over at Broad Rock occurs, it's going to keep pulling people out of downtown, the historic vibrant centers, to more of an outskirts, you know, tying in with the commons. So that's, if, hey, if it's a great deal, and it might be, have some value to the town, fields and such, that's great. What I pulled out of the conversation at the meeting a month ago was, you know, really keying into that that was the site for the community gym, and I think that was kind of like the key piece that was a concern for me. So I just, that's, I kind of want to bring that out. I don't know if I need to sit down or not, but, you know, the last piece, is that the piece that was proposed to have the affordable housing built by the diocese, or, you know, it was going to be developed by the diocese? Is that the piece that...
That's one of the pieces that was looked at by a private developer under lease or acquisition of that property from the diocese, and that goes back several years.
Okay, but I thought that that was slated to be for affordable housing or workforce housing. I don't know if that's...
It would have been for a comprehensive permit under zoning, but it would have had a far greater density than would be allowed by the zoning in that district.
Okay, well, I guess, you know, I will sit down, but I'll probably bring it up at some future meeting, you know, that if it is the town council's goal to have workforce housing and develop workforce housing, and there was a piece there...
This wasn't workforce housing.
It wasn't.
This was going to be senior housing.
Affordable or not affordable?
Affordable senior housing, not workforce housing.
Okay, all right, well, then that's a whole other thing, because if all the affordable housing that's being built is only for seniors, I'm just not sure how the families, you know, are going to stay in the community. You know, so I think that's, that's where I'm, how I look at it, and so if the town, that's a great deal, but then it kind of contradicts one of the town's goals of having affordable housing, whether it's workforce or elderly, you know, is there a plan for some other piece somewhere else that would be better located? I can see where that would not be the best location for that. But is there, then, with that, would the town invest money elsewhere in town where it would make more sense? I guess that's my question. And I'll sit down. Thank you.
I think my answer to you would be, as long as the town controls the property, if it deemed that that property should be used for affordable housing, the town could take that step.
Okay. Anybody else? Would they like to come forward for the comments from interested citizens? Please state your name for the record.
David Caprio. Good evening. Just wanted to come and speak a little bit towards a lot of the correspondences I've been receiving, but a few things going on at the State House, more specifically the funding formula, which has been proposed by the commissioner of secondary education. She presented her rationale and presented her, the formula with a lot of backup to the legislature last week. The presentation was televised, I'm sure the PowerPoint is available online. And certainly, it was not promising news for South Kingstown, and I've been receiving a lot of correspondence on that. I had some correspondence with Steve that day, and he forwarded to me a list of some very interesting facts about the information gathering that was used in that formula in her proposal, and also some questions that were very topical. Due to the time constraints that day, I wasn't able to get to the questions, but I did speak to the commissioner afterwards, and invited her to come down to South County to address a lot of the concerns, not only South Kingstown, but some of the other towns around us have. And she indicated that, you know, we'd work out her schedule in a convenient time and date for everybody down here, so that rather than filtering it through me, I know there are a lot of concerns, not only from the elected officials, but from the residents, and I'm working on securing a date, and I'll probably do that through Steve with you, to have not only elected officials, but the public have an opportunity to ask her, you know, whatever they want to about the formula. And I'm confident we'll be able to put that together. Obviously, I have concerns about it, as does everybody down here, so that I look forward to putting that together. Actually, Steve mentioned to me, as I walked in, that we're also going to be putting together a legislative, another legislative day sometime soon, so by then, maybe we'll have some more news or some updates. And remember, that's her proposal, that's the commissioner's proposal, not necessarily the final legislation that's going in. There are other proposals which have different results for South Kingstown and other cities and towns around. So that was just her proposal. Secondly, the chairman of finance, as I indicated earlier, I was, I accepted the new speaker's request to serve as the chair of the judiciary committee, so I'm no longer on the finance committee. But the chair indicated that the supplemental budget may be coming out in the next few weeks, and I know there, I received the communication from the council regarding relief of some of the mandates. Actually, it was an extensive list that you forwarded to me, and I can't speak with certainty as to whether any of those are going to be addressed in the supplemental budget. I know that there being, a lot of things are being discussed currently. By the time we have our legislative meeting, we may have some more information on that. But there certainly were some wide-ranging, you know, requests by not only South Kingstown, but many other cities and towns to get relief from, things like, if my memory serves me correctly, collective bargaining, things like teachers' step pay, things like minimum manning, and things like that. So certainly, there's some very large items that will spark some spirited debate if those are actually put in play. But I just, again, when we have the meeting with you, when we arrange it with the legislators, at that point, we may have some more information as to what specific proposals may or may not be up for debate in the supplemental budget and the final budget. I just wanted to come and actually present to you that, those two items, which are first and foremost on the communications that I'm receiving.
Well, we'll probably talk more about the scope of all that, the second part of your question about when we meet with the legislator about that supplemental budget and some of the mandates. But just going back to the education formula, I know you forwarded that information from Steve last week in regards to the formula. Did you happen to have a chance to pass it around to any of the other legislators up there who might have been affected adversely by the formula?
Actually, at the hearing, I spoke with Representative Walsh and...
I know our local ones, I was even thinking even a little bit broader than just our local representatives. I think everybody got it from, who represents South Kingstown, but just wondering if, just, you know, discussions with some of the other communities...
There's a lot of discussions about the formula. Some people are giddy with joy, while others are, you know, extremely concerned over the proposal. And again, at this point, it's still a proposal.
I understand it is still a proposal, but it is interesting the way this formula was brought about, thus far from what we've been able to determine, or at least, you know, the small analysis from here. I think other communities might be interested if they kind of look at where some of the basis numbers come from.
That's correct.
Because it seems to be a top-secret type of thing, I don't know if, Dr., but Deb just would be able to figure out that formula herself without the aid of the professor from Brown. So it's just, it's interesting, some of the points of it, you know, considering some of the information they get, you know, median income from back in the year 2000 to start.
Right.
Then, I mean, you know, things have certainly changed. By the time this formula is put into place, I mean, we're talking almost 11 years out, plus when revals were done in 2006, when we had a very good year on property versus what we are now, you know...
Yep, and actually, Steve pointed all that out in the letter.
Yeah, exactly, it's in here. We just want, you know, again, we're probably going to lose whatever the formula is, I'd like to say that we're going to come out and win, but again, we're just looking for something that's, you know, a little fairer.
Did the commissioner provide Steve to you or to the council? Because at the, at her presentation to the legislature, there was the PowerPoint, but there was also a pretty detailed explanation of each component of the formula. Do you know if the, was that, was that put online, or have you had a chance to access that? If not, I can certainly get your copy as quickly as I can.
I've got everything. I've got all of the data runs that are used with the, with each of the components of the formula. I think the real question comes down as whether the factors that are used in the formulas are in fact the most appropriate if a new formula is going to be established. If you're going to blow up the existing system, you need to ensure that the system that results is in fact fair and equitable, or as, or more, as fair and equitable as it can be. I just point you to 19, 2001 study that was done by the Department of Municipal Affairs for the, looking at equalized assessment values, clearly indicated at that time that there was question as to why they would be using median family income to inflate and adjust the values. It wasn't considered at that time because the formula wasn't being used. But I'm not sure that information was really front and center with the folks that were at the table that created this proposal. So as long as the formula gets proper vetting, and that there's documentation that this is the most appropriate solution, I think that there may be a good deal of adjustments that people may find appropriate. Unfortunately, when you start with the numbers first, many people aren't going to look at the formula as long as they feel that they're getting a larger share of the, a share of the pot. So I think that it would have been far more important to determine what the factors were that should be taken into the formula, and got consensus on that before the final number runs were done, because you've set up winners and losers, rather than people working collaboratively on what's the most equitable formula. But that's something that hopefully, over the next several weeks, can be discussed. And obviously, as you say, David, there is no legislation to look at now as to the frequency of change, or why certain standards are being used. Until we see the legislation, you really don't know whether or not the numbers that have been presented are in fact going to be accurate, or accurate for a one-year snapshot.
Well, I'm hopeful before the legislation is heard or voted on, that the commissioner, we can get the commissioner down here. The entire delegation spoke about this right after that, her presentation, and we're going to coordinate to try to get her down here to answer all of the concerns that you may have about that. So anyway, you may recall last year, Representative Igelo's legislation on a formula, which there was some spirited questioning, and the finance committee, I was sitting on it at the time, because I believe it cut South Kingstown less than half, and actually, Naru Ganza went to zero under her formula last year. It was a lot more punitive to this region of the state. So thankfully, that didn't...
Yeah, it didn't go anywhere.
That wasn't accepted as a proposal, so. So I guess I'll work with Steve on arranging something, arranging a convenient time for yourselves with the commissioner.
Okay. All right.
David, excuse me, is there, the elephant in the room, the $220 million deficit current year, any flavor you're getting on whether the finance committee will go along with the governor's proposals? Will they go it alone with their own proposals? Is there talk about raising taxes? Any flavor, early flavor up there?
Again, as I said, I no longer sit on the committee. I know they have had...
Right, I just said flavor.
And the, and the, all the hearings are televised yet, so there are, there is an opportunity for anybody interested to actually view them live. But, you know, the chairman hasn't made any public statements to it yet, and the committee is seriously considering all the proposals before it. You know, we have a constitutional requirement to balance the budget, and cutting, you know, cutting other services and cutting more of the government is getting more difficult to do every year, as, you know, many departments and many agencies are saying they're cut to the bone. There's about 3,000 less state employees now than there were, you know, when Governor Cachieri took over. So the personnel, we have to balance the ability to serve the public with the, with the cost of doing so. So you do need people in positions to do those, to do those functions. So I wish I, Jim, I wish I could give you a specific answer and say that they're looking towards one way or another, but I really, you know, I really would expect that they're examining proposals from all sides.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, we start running out of time.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and every day, there's, you know, there's a price tag to every day that we wait. With, you know, 2010, where we're flying through it, and we're still, we still have to fill in last year's hole. So again, I saw it, you know, that the chairman stated publicly that he expects something in the next couple of weeks, and they'll have hearings, and hopefully a vote on that, and it'll come to the floor. And I don't expect it to be something that's going to come or go quietly, once it does come. Thank you.
Just tough our budgets together.
Ella?
No, thank you, appreciate you coming out, Senator David, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? No? Then I'd just like to make a comment about, last Thursday was an article in the Providence Journal regarding the underage drinking and the, kind of shed a little bit of bad light on the town of South Kingstown, but I think as a council, we agree that we wholeheartedly support our police force and their efforts to stop the underage drinking that's occurring in the town, and I know the school committee's working on some issues on their part, but again, this is just the town council supporting the police, and we just want to go on record that, you know, we'd like to see it end completely, and support our police, whatever they can do to decrease that. I know that Ella and I, and I haven't been able to, this year, sat on the Partnership for Prevention, and I know it's something that they've been working on. It's a serious, serious thing, and I just hope the kids just realize that somebody really seriously could get hurt, and I don't want us to be compared to Barrington at all in regards to this particular issue. It's just absolutely terrible, and it makes me very nervous, everything that's been going on, even the local papers, that, you know, what does it take, you know, for somebody to end up dead, and then everybody's sorry? And you can't, you can't push the reset button on that particular game. And again, we support the police in whatever efforts that they're trying to do. All right, well, thank you, that's all I wanted to state tonight. So we move on to town manager's report.
The only item I just want to remind all is that the council and school committee will be meeting at 7:00 on March 10th, that's this Wednesday, for the fourth public hearing, or informational hearing on budget development. At this time, the school committee's recommended budget, which was submitted to the manager's office on February 9th, will be reviewed by the council. I did want to also say that as a component of my budget message, I stated concern as far as the school committee's budget, as it relates to the supplemental budget that the governor submitted last December. And our concern is that if that budget is not approved as presented by the governor by general assembly, that there could be implications as far as the funding levels for not just the 9-10 year, but also the 10-11 year. I've documented what those cost concerns are, and indicated to the school committee a desire to have them be able to respond to how they would address those revenue-to-expenditure shortfalls if in fact that supplemental budget wasn't approved as presented, and if the 11 budget was adopted based on the income as presented in the governor's 11 budget. Obviously, even what the governor has recommended could be substantially altered based on the proposal for this education funding formula. Each one of those components would have dire consequences for the school system as far as the level of program that they would be able to provide. So I think that while we're not trying to scare anybody... So I think that while we're not trying to scare anybody, we're certainly required to document what the cost differentials could be, and the school committee would be vested with the responsibility to advising how they would address those type of revenue shortfalls. So I think that it's, is a very important meeting for Wednesday, and really is but one meeting in a budget process, that as things unfold, there may be necessity for adjustments on both the municipal budget and the school budget as we go forward. So hopefully, we can get an appropriate level of discussion at Wednesday night's meeting. So I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that and look forward to that participation. Other than that, unless there's questions on either of the two reports, minutes since the last meeting, I'd yield the floor to the solicitor.
Yeah, okay. Mike?
Unless there are questions, I really have nothing to say.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Next, we move on to appointments, and I think we have some appointments.
We do have a couple of appointments. First, we'll do the Economic Development Committee, has two people whose terms expire. I'd like to nominate Christopher Mazier and Dennis Moffett for a term of three years, so they would, their term would run till March 2013.
Second?
Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And also, for the zoning board of review, I'd like to nominate Douglas Bates, and his term would be for three years. It would run till March 2013.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed unanimously. I think that's it for tonight. Any further on those? Next, we move on to new business items. New business item B, a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into a lease for a five-year period between the town of South Kingstown and David W. Carpenter, DBA Copperidge Farm, 520 Mattoonik Beach Road, Wakefield, 02879, to farm an approximate 21.9 parcel of property for annual fee of $1,584. Said property is the portion of the assessor's plat 92-2, Lot 39, and is further identified as parcel B1 on that plan drawn March 1986, revised October 1987, and recorded in Plan Book 19, page 13 of the town's land evidence records. Said lease is further described in the memorandum from the principal planner, Nickerson, to town manager dated February 26, 2010, entitled Town Farm Lease. Steve?
Carpenter Farm is the highest qualified bidder for the, the lease. The lease would call for a fee of $1,584 a year to be paid to the town. Use of the, the 21 acres would be for hay and vegetable purposes. I concur with the recommendation provided by Mr. Nickerson.
Okay, any more questions for Steve regarding this? No? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move approval of new business item B.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is new business C, a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute a five-year lease agreement with an option to renew five subsequent year, five renew, hold on a minute, let's say, five subsequent five-year renewals for cellular antenna placement on the town's Victoria Lane water tank and the Mattoonik Road water tank, oh, excuse me, Mortucket Road water tank, in accordance with the terms of the lease agreements as approved by the town solicitor. This authorization is also conditioned upon site plan review and approval by town technical review committee, and is further described in the memorandum from the public service directed to the town manager dated March 2, 2010, entitled Metro PCS Lease Agreement, Victoria Lane, Mortucket Road Water Tanks.
The rental agreements would start at $30,000 a year per site. As we mentioned in last week's budget discussions, we are showing a revenue in the general fund of the $60,000. It's $2,500 per month for $30,000 a year, first year, and it'll escalate each year thereafter by, I think it's two and a half percent, is it, John? Three percent thereafter. There's still a few kinks that need to be worked out of the final contract that we're dealing with, but both of these leases should be available for my signature with council authorization within the next four weeks.
Okay. Any question regarding these?
Welcome.
Yes, welcome.
Very much welcomed.
And we usually put the money aside just to, to qualify that. We usually put the money for those for the upkeep of the water tower tanks.
We have done that in the past. These are coming to the general fund to be able to pay down the cost of property taxes.
Okay, yes, we did actually say that, we were moving over that. Little change. All right, is there a motion?
I move approval of new business item C.
Second? Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so move.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Meeting is adjourned, and it is 9:05.